With the receipt and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Clarissa. The first item tonight, I have a statement to read and then we will move to council action. Councilmember Jeff Haga submitted an email resignation Monday night. I have accepted his resignation and the council plans to ratify the acceptance of his resignation at tonight's city council meeting. Councilmember Haga has served the community as an at-large council member since January 2014. This position is up for election this year when the term expires at the end of the year. I appreciate councilmember's willingness to serve our city and wish him the best. Item A on the city council agenda, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution seventeen dash four two, accepting the irrevocable resignation of councilmember Jeff Haga effective March twentieth, two thousand seventeen, and noticing the appointment of an at-large council member to replace councilmember Jeff Haga. Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, I move to pass Resolution seventeen dash forty-two.
Second. Motion by councilmember Nichols and a second by councilmember Jacob. Discussion to motion, seeing none on this vote.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Mayor Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
The vote passes for him, favor.
We'll now move to communications, city manager.
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
City attorney?
Thank you, mayor, and it's with great pleasure that I can tell the council and the city members present that Sam Smith gave birth to her first child. Sam's taking some time off from prosecuting. She delivered Holden Smith on March sixteenth. He was six pounds, one ounce, nineteen inches long. Mom's comment to us was, "It was worth it." Thank you, sir, no other news.
Thank you. David Oka?
Yes, mayor and council. Last week, staff took part in an economic summit that was hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. There were approximately a hundred plus people in attendance and we got a lot of attention. A lot of contractors and developers came up with a lot of questions and made some really good contacts. That's my report.
Thanks. Ryan Clay?
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
Joe Piper?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Justin Stoker?
Thank you, mayor, I'd like to turn some time over to Greg Davenport for an update on Seventieth South.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Knife River Construction is currently installing two deep sewer manholes at two locations along Seventieth South. The first location is at thirteen hundred west where the contractor has encountered groundwater and unstable soils. This has slowed his progress at this intersection. Unfortunately, until he works out those problems, he may be at that location for a little while. The second location that he is working at is at twenty-two hundred west where the work installing the manhole is almost complete. Next week crews will begin to make sewer tie-ins to the north and twenty-two hundred west and begin to lay twenty-four inch pipe westward. This work will call, will require a closure of northbound twenty-two hundred west for a few days for safety reasons. The public is being notified with variable message boards and there will be detours provided. The intersection will open just as soon as that tie-in work is complete. Contractor is also working on a new water line being constructed from twenty-seventh west to the Utah Salt Lake Canal and that water line is almost complete and is ready for testing. When testing is done, the pipe will be accepted by the city and we will change the traffic control at the intersection of twenty-seventh west so that it's more vehicle friendly to permit left turns. Contractor has also begun to construct a fifty-four inch storm drain pipe west from Camelot Way. As this work advances westward, the council should see cross streets closed for a few days as the work closes or clogs up those intersections so that cars and the workers won't be able to be in the same spot. The work on the canals is also almost complete. The overflow structures are being backfilled this week and wing walls are being formed and concrete is being placed as well. We are confident the work will be completed on those canals prior to April fifteenth. Is there any other questions the council would like to ask me about Seventieth South construction?
Questions from council? I just had one, if I might. The area west of the twenty-two hundred work that's occurring and the canal work that's occurring, there's approximately fifteen hundred to two thousand feet there that are delineated with cones and barriers where no work is occurring. Could you check and see if we couldn't remove that until the work progresses that direction? It's really impeding traffic through that area and there's no work being completed.
I'll talk with the contractor. We also have noticed that, that they've got a large work area where nothing's going on and that's not appropriate.
Also, and then thank them for opening up the intersection at twenty-seven hundred for the large assemblage that happened last weekend, that helped immensely.
I think it was successful, thanks. Anything else?
Thanks. Anything else, Justin?
No, thank you, mayor.
Chief Charman?
Thank you, mayor, here for Chief McElwraith tonight and fire has nothing to report.
Chief Diamond?
Thank you, mayor. We have our graduation of our first citizens academy for this year. They are graduating tomorrow night and you're all welcome to be there. We're grateful for the opportunity that we have to present that and to put on that academy and for the support of the council and mayor, thank you.
Thanks. Council, councilmember Jacob.
Nothing tonight, thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, just briefly, the council had recommended to the sustainability committee at the last council meeting about making sure that they bring minutes and it was good to see that we had a meeting and minutes were provided. So, I wanted to thank the committee for stepping right up, listening and our last meeting, they're moving right ahead with what we talked about. So, anyway, good, good progress, thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, mayor. First, I would like to welcome the Cub Scouts who are here joined with us today, thanks for coming, and the Boy Scouts who also came, it's a pleasure to see them. And I want to welcome West Jordan High School students who are here, it's a pleasure having you here, thank you for joining with us today. Since our last meeting, I held a town hall meeting, there's a couple of people who attended that that are here too, so thank you for joining us and they asked if we could continue to hold some more of those, so I will be holding more. It will work out the schedule for the rest of the year and it will be published in the journal, so everyone will know about it. Thank you, mayor.
I have two items. The first item is a letter from Western Growth. I'd like you to look at this, the Western Growth Coalition. And I stated my opinion whether we should endorse this letter. They'd like it tomorrow, so I'd need council approval before I endorse our name along with the other names that appear on here. So, if you could look it over tonight, just give me your opinion whether we want to support this or not. And then Chuck Tarver needs a council name for the CDPG committee. They will be meeting on Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, April twelfth, and April nineteenth from three to five P.M. I can do this or if there's somebody else that'd love to do it, that would be appropriate.
Can you tell me what that is, what that stands for and what they do?
The Community Development Block Grant Program. You remember when they come and, this is the finalists that come to council from this committee for that money. Have you done it yet?
I haven't.
Would you like to? Is anybody opposed to? All in favor of Dirk, Councilmember Burton, attending this committee for the council, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, it will be Councilmember Burton.
Thank you.
Those are the dates. We'll move now to citizens' comment. I have three signed up to speak tonight. They will be first. As a reminder, you'll be allowed three minutes to speak on the subject of your choice. And first one is Joan Crowther.
Thank you for this opportunity and this may be one of the more unique citizen comments that you get, but I am proposing an opportunity for the city to acquire an historic property that should be preserved. This property is the hundred-and-fifteen-year-old home known to some as the Old Doll House on Twenty-seventh West at eighty-two seventy south, built in nineteen oh two. It belonged for years to prominent citizen David T. Doll and his wife Amanda. One of their sons, Lawrence Doll, was the first town board president of West Jordan, which is much like a mayor, and a daughter, Mary, and her husband, Joe Schmidt, are also well-known citizens. To help you understand how old this home is, Annie Oakley lived for twenty-four years after it was built. The Titanic wouldn't sink for another ten years and it would be twenty-five years before Lindbergh would make his famous flight across the Atlantic to Paris. The house stood for twenty-two years before electricity came to West Jordan, but this house did have the first, the city's first indoor bathroom. It was to this home many dignitaries of church and state came to call. Women watched their sweethearts and sons go off to war through windows fitted with blackout curtains in case of potential air raids. Births and deaths occurred within the walls. Spanish flu raged and quarantines for scarlet fever were imposed. More happily, weddings, socials, teas, showers, receptions and reunions have been joyously held there. Perhaps the essence of all this living has seeped into the walls because there is such a feeling and a spirit in this home of all that has happened. My husband, Carl, and I have lived there for the past forty-five years. We've tried to keep the character of the home but also make improvements to the home and yard and then share the property with friends, neighbors and the community. Perhaps most noticeably with Christmas lights, making it look like a little gingerbread house for passersby. We have in fact put our heart and soul into this home. We love it and want it preserved for generations to come. My proposal to the city is to purchase this home for an art space. It could be an art gallery much like the old homes in Saint George Heritage Square. There is room on the property to put parking in front as it sits way back from the road. It's also feasible to have other artsy, to have other artists or artisans in studios in the back. I'm an artist and I've exhibited many times in the Shore Gallery and I know that our city needs a larger, more interesting exhibit space and that could happen there. Other favorable factors of this property is that it's close to West Jordan, it's close to the tracks line. I invite you on the city council to come and visit it. Know that it could be a much-needed art space and a way to preserve a wonderful old building. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
May I approach the clerk?
You could hand them to our city clerk if you'd like. Thank you. Caleb Saunders?
Hi, council, thank you for your time. My name is Caleb Saunders, I'm a troop for scout, or I'm a scout for troop ten sixty-two and for my Eagle project, I am asking permission to install a flagpole and a memorial at Ronwood, Copper Hills, Ronwood Baseball Park. This flagpole and memorial will be in honor of the two officers who have fallen in line of duty here in West Jordan, Officer Ronald M. Wood and Officer Thomas M. Reese. I personally have a strong connection with the Ronwood Fields. I learned to play out there and I played my first five years of baseball out there and I still spend time upping. I have a deep respect for the officers of our community, they work so hard and I feel thankful for all that they do. I'd love the idea of the moment, I'd love the idea to make a memorial for them at the park that so many West Jordan citizens visit to watch and play baseball. We are looking to put in a commercial thirty-foot tall satin internal vehicle flagpole. We have received a building permit and are ready to put it in as soon as possible. Does the council have any questions for me?
We have one question, councilmember Nichols.
Not so much a question, but I, I know the staff, well maybe it is a question. I know staff works a lot with the scout community on projects. Has, has the city had a chance to review this project already?
Yes, it's on your agenda as five H.
Okay, very good. So, thank you very much, look forward to this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Alexandra Efrainer?
Mister Chairman and councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen, may we pause for a moment to reflect upon our common goals before we begin the business of this meeting? We are privileged to gather here together in a system that gives us freedom to participate in our own governments. Whether from within or through the strength provided by our personal faiths, we seek wisdom, understanding, fairness and resolve in the fulfillment of our duties and in the pursuance of our goals. May our differences be respected and our common aspiration of promoting the public good be our guide in carrying out the tasks we are about to undertake. Thank you. And I want to apologize for my statement last week. I am guilty, I did not read the agenda and when we were talking about the form of government, the mayor council and manager council, and I made a, I complained because you all hadn't addressed the citizens, citizens group that were going to present this, so I apologize, I was wrong and anyway, please forgive me. Anyway, last week was sad. It, it, I don't know why, everything, it seems sad that West Jordan was not doing as well as we should be doing. But you know, you all have to be so proud of how much you worked in trying to get Facebook in West Jordan. You worked and worked and worked along with Jordan School District and along with the state and we only lost that by untragically. Politics will come ahead by Mayor McAdams and the Utah State Education Board. It was sad that we don't have it here and, but I think you need to be really proud how hard you did work for that. And Police Chief Diamond, I love you, but I want to know why we're not bringing that group from tomorrow night, that academy in before the city council. And the same thing whenever policemen graduate, I'm asking once again, please, don't have it at two o'clock in the afternoon or three o'clock. You know, we pay taxes and I do, we did it last year, I don't know why it's being done secretly now. And I, I'm, I'm really sorry about that. I think the people in West Jordan need to see these people, they've worked hard and they did volunteer. But anyway, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. That's all that I have signed up to speak tonight. I'll turn the time over to those who would like to speak on the topic of your choice. If you're here now would be the opportunity. As a reminder, three minutes to speak, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, mayor, council. My name is Tyrone Fields, my address is twenty-six fifty-five West Marion Drive. My issue tonight is the traffic lights. I don't, I don't know about you and the other council members, but I have two younger kids. I live right off of seventy-eight hundred. And the traffic lights are not in tune to the traffic flow, especially during the time of going to school and coming home. You have cars that are impeding traffic or that are in the middle of the street and I don't know if it's been addressed, it needs to be re-adressed, but we need to go back and talk with the engineer so that these traffic lights can be retuned so that they come online so that the turning signals flow with the traffic. They're not doing so. And if you're ever out there, you have kids that's waiting and you have cars that's in the middle of the street. I've seen too many times, and I'm a former Marine, that we have kids trying to go across the street where we have cars that's starting on red lights and they're, they're having to run across the street. How many times are we going to have to wait for accidents and see accidents that happen out there until we continue to see kids that get hurt out there before this council take action and get these lights put back on the right time? Hmm? Are you, are you going to, you going to explain that to, are you going to come to my house and explain that to me?
Could you give us that address again, where that light is?
Seventy-eight hundred.
What west?
What west?
Seventy-eight hundred south, twenty-seven hundred west. That is a major problem right there. Major problem right there at the two gas stations that you have right there, the bank, Cow Ranch. Major problem, that is not on time, it is not on time ever. You cannot trigger that light to turn. Please don't come to my house if something happened, I'm telling you that right now. Don't come to my house and try to explain to me because I'm paying it to your attention, it needs to get fixed. And that's every day, and then you could take that down to twenty-two hundred. You could take that down to sixty-two hundred. Follow the pattern, you'll see that it is a critical pattern and it needs to be monitored. We need to put some monitor in there, police wise. Chief Diamond, we need, we need to monitor this just a little closely because cars are running these red lights when we have school time in. Kids are having to be careful when they're out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we'll check into it. I know that's controlled by the state, but we will check into that problem, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak or any citizens' comments? Please.
Peter Jones, thirty-eight twenty-nine West Winthrop. Recently I was, I guess the victim of some vandalism on the Bingham Creek side of my property. Somebody spray painted the words "Save the Trees" on my vinyl fence. Now, the irony is that the trees were already gone, thank you very much, or not thank you, but I, we kind of missed them substantially. But I wanted to suggest that if the pathway that was put in through that, through that Bingham Creek area was done to where it was a usable pathway, right now it's very rough, not safe for walking or biking or, or any, or running. I'd like to suggest that if that parkway was a little bit smoother, there'd be a little bit more traffic there and I don't think that we'd have the, the issues of vandalism that we're seeing down there. So, I would suggest that prior to putting any more money into further enhancing the park that's there, I would suggest let's fix the pathway that's in the park that is a hazard to people who, who dare use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak or any citizens' comments?
Hello, mayor, council, my name is Jason Saunders, I am a resident of West Jordan, thirty-two seventy-two west, sixty-seven seventy-five south. I also happen to be the president of the West Jordan Copper Hills Cowherkin, where the memorial we're looking to place. As a president of the league, we're super excited to be able to have this opportunity. We enjoy playing baseball out of that park and the fields and we also enjoy being part of the community and helping to beautify and to help in any way that we can. It is our goal to provide the youth of this community an opportunity to be able to recreate and to experience the things of the world and, and what we have to offer and give them a safe place to, to do that out. We also want to help them understand the importance of those that have gone before us, especially the people who serve our great community. There are many officers and police officers, firefighters amongst city representatives that we want to help them to understand that they have given their all as well and that although we might just be playing a game, it is an opportunity to learn and to grow. And we are grateful as a league to be able to help participate and to help this carry on and have that memorial to honor those that have gone before us, especially where we get to play baseball out at the park. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, any citizens' comments? I will close citizens' comments. And prior to moving to consent, you had a statement, councilmember Burton?
Right, I was just asking if you could give Brian Clay permission to review about that path, that park and trees. If that would be okay with you, mayor?
This is currently, this trail is behind the Naylor Farms subdivision. It was cut and graded by volunteers, city went in and placed millings. The millings were substandard, the resident is correct. We have it on a schedule this season, working with Public Works and they're going to go and grade it and then overlay it with asphalt with the bond money that we have, so. It will get an overlay this, this spring, so that's where we're at.
Thanks for that report, looks like it's already scheduled. We'll move to the consent items. I've had no one ask to pull any items. Motion to be in order, councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second?
I have a motion by councilmember Nichols and a second by councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion, seeing none on this vote?
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
The vote passes for him, favor.
Item six A, public hearing item, received public input and considered for approval, Resolution seventeen dash four eight, amending the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen salary schedule. John Gardner?
Thank you, mayor and council. As you are aware, from time to time, it becomes necessary to make some changes to personnel. There are four main parts to the salary schedule change this time. The bulk of it is dealing with the reorganization in our Public Works Department, mostly our utilities, water, wastewater and stormwater. There are some changes, we did increase our seasonal rate of pay for our seasonal employees, mostly those are in parks and that was already tentatively agreed to by council prior to this. It's just being memorialized here in the salary schedule. Happy to report that that's had great effect so far and our Parks Department has been able to get a lot of staff and will shortly be fully staffed for their seasonals, so. and will shortly be fully staffed for their seasonal. So that's had a great effect. There is a reorganization in the Development Department where we are creating the Economic Development Department and the Planning and Zoning Department. So we'll separate those two and be able to focus on the economic development as council and mayor have asked. And then the last items are dealing with the salary adjustments for our attorneys. Are there any questions?
Questions? Looks like you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing for item six A. If you're here to speak on this item, now would be the opportunity. Please.
Alexandra Efremo, thirty-seven thirty-five, Jud Circle. I'm a little bit confused. You know, going back again, transparency. What I'm questioning is why are we not getting more details, especially on the, you just mentioned the attorney's salary? Why are we not getting amounts of money? I mean, I don't know why we can't be more transparent. The more transparent we are, the more people are gonna get interested in government. But to hide everything, I mean, it's just so generic. I'm very disappointed in not more information along that salary schedule. Why is it, is there something wrong that we can't mention the amounts? Or is this not the right time to do it? Do we just do it generically? I don't know. I guess under citizen comment, it says, things that are brought up, somebody would come to me and let me know why. So I would like a staff member to please tell me. Why can we not be more transparent? Thank you.
Just to be clear, all of the changes are in the packet and are available for the public to look at.
I had another minute. The packet, the people in this room do not see the packet. Why can't we just say it? Bring out some amounts? I'm not happy. I mean, does everyone here have a packet? I don't think so. We have scouts here that are trying to learn about government. We have kids that are here and doing classwork about government. And I'm sorry, a packet is not suffice. Thank you.
Just to be clear, the entire packet's available online and we have a packet available for any citizens that would like to review it. So we are transparent. Anyone else wishing to speak on item six A? I will close the public hearing for item six A and return to the council for discussion on motion. Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. I move to approve resolution seventeen dash forty-eight.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols, a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion. I would just like to say that I'm happy that this is going through. We've had real trouble attracting for certain areas of our city employment. And with this, we've seen a vast improvement in applications. So I'm excited to get this passed tonight. Let's vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
The vote passes for in favor.
Public hearing item six B, received public input and considered for approval, ordinance seventeen dash one six, approving the vacation of the turnaround easement on Lot three oh seven of Bloomfield Heights subdivision, phase three. David Oka?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott Lemke will address this issue.
I'll be brief, Mayor and Council. Typically, we try to address these temporary easements administratively if possible. This is an older plat of Bloomfield Heights, phase three, no lively development. You can see in the upper right-hand corner, this temporary turnaround, which was required for turning around emergency vehicles, fire department vehicles mainly. If you blow up that area, you can see that the language says to be abandoned upon completion of adjacent development. Lot three oh seven will be unbuildable until abandonment of the easement. So, I'm not sure why that's there. This is more typical of the standard language we've put on plats now where it automatically is abandoned once the proper construction adjacent to the turnaround is built. And as you can see in this case, there's phase three in the Bloomfield Heights area. Again, you can see where the little temporary turnaround is currently built. This is the most current aerial photo, but if you were to drive out there today, you'll see that all the roads are in. The turnaround is no longer needed for safe access, for turning around and so forth. And that's why it's being presented to you tonight is just to officially vacate that easement so they can go ahead and build a new home on that property. Is there any questions?
Questions from council? Is that your case, Scott? I will now open the public hearing for item six B. If you're to speak on this item, now would be the opportunity. Seeing no one, I will return to the council for discussion and the motion. Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve ordinance seventeen dash sixteen.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jacob, a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, let's vote.
First, I'd like to apologize to Councilmember Jacob. I said Jacobs last vote.
You are forgiven.
Thank you. Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
The vote is passed for in favor.
Item six C, public hearing item, received public input and considered for approval, ordinance seventeen dash seventeen, amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code Title thirteen, Chapter two and Chapter sixteen regarding low-power radio services antennas, citywide applicability, city of West Jordan applicant, David Oka.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott will address this issue.
So, Mayor and Council, I'll be brief again. Last year, we received two legal challenges regarding this section of code, low-power radio service antennas, in other words, cell towers. We were challenged regarding our current code versus current FCC regulations. And so the amendment before you tonight is just to make sure that our code is in compliance with those federal requirements. Specifically, they mainly are geared towards co-location of existing cell tower sites and expansions on, again, existing sites. We took the opportunity to revamp and make this part of the code a little bit more user-friendly and address a few things that we've been wanting to get to for some time. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but that's the gist of the text amendment you have before you.
Councilmember Burton?
Will this decrease my cell bill?
I doubt it. I don't know.
Thanks, Scott. I will now open the public hearing for item six C. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Now's the time. I will close the public hearing for item six C and return to the council. Councilmember Burton?
Because I think it's important for West Jordan City to follow the laws, I vote to adopt resolution seventeen dash thirty, authorizing the following. City staff are bringing a draft ordinance for a future council meeting for city council to consider. City captive staff to include changes to the consolidated fee schedule and change the fee structure for residential sanitary. I have the wrong one.
I was all excited for a second, too.
Let me look at this.
Seventeen dash seventeen.
Okay. I vote to approve that ordinance seventeen dash. Thank you. Dash seventeen dash sixteen, right?
Seventeen dash seventeen.
Seventeen dash seventeen. Thank you. I vote to adopt ordinance seventeen dash seventeen.
Second.
I think. I have a motion by Councilmember Burton and a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
The vote passes for in favor.
Business item seven A, discussion and possible action regarding presentation by Method Studio on the cultural arts facility study. Jim Reedy?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you recall, previously, Salt Lake County had awarded a grant to our city for the study of theater arts complex in the city. And in that study, they were supposed to prepare conceptual plans and elevations, begin engineering studies to further evaluate potential sites and prepare a pre-designed report and identify a project budget. With this in mind, we put out an RFP and we had some architectural firms respond to that RFP. Method Studio was the low-responsive and responsible respondent to that RFP. And they have prepared for you a presentation tonight, so I'm gonna turn the time over to them. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Joe Smith. I'm a principal architect with Method Studio. This is David Hultsberg. He's an architect with my office. We led a process with the city. Number one, we're super grateful to have been engaged and to have been a part of this process. The city had assembled a great team as a steering committee to evaluate the needs of this project and to engage in this preliminary study and feasibility study. And I think it was a very successful process that we enjoyed being part of. So thank you again for that opportunity. Method Studio, we're a firm that is a medium to large-sized firm based out of Salt Lake City. And one of the market sectors that we specialize in is cultural and performing arts facilities. And so with the analysis of facilities such as this, it's a type of project that we're very much passionate about and have great deal of experience with. What I wanted to do is, we have a brief slide presentation and I've been told not to take too much time, but give you an overview of the project and the results of the study. First of all, the steering committee included individuals from the city and citizens that we think is relevant to talk about just for a quick second. Dave Newton, who's a former mayor, as you know, for West Jordan City, he was involved in every one of the meetings and we appreciated his feedback and input. Chris McConaughey from the council also participated, came to all the meetings, had great insight representing the city and the council. Jim Reedy also participated throughout the process, as well as members from the Arts Council chaired by Jared Kwan and Jen Crabbe and others participated in the process, which their insight and input, I think, was very valuable to the outcome of this. As Jim indicated, our job on this was to analyze various sites. Let's see, make sure I get this thing going. That had been identified as sites of interest for this potential project. You can see, and I apologize, they're not very visible, but there's a site located there, site C, site B, and I think that says site A. Through a process of evaluating and studying the building potential on each of these sites, the preferred direction that was identified was site B. And site B is located along seventy-eight hundred south and right adjacent to the park. And so you can see here, this was one of the diagrams that we analyzed the site. So it's this piece of property located right there, which is currently just a landscape part of the park. And let me get back to my notes here. So one of the key reasons for selection as the preferred direction for this project was its prominence along seventy-eight hundred south and that clear entrance and visibility for marketability and promoting events that would occur at this site. Its relationship to city center was also a critical key factor. And then connectivity to the park as an amenity and extension of the park and a potential overlap of parking use from the park and the new facility itself. So those were considerations that led to this site. This is a little bit more of a developed site plan illustrating, again, this is just a concept study. So it's not necessarily any sort of final plan, but just testing the feasibility of a design and a site, looking at the number of parking stalls associated with the building. A building of this scale and scope would be required to have a hundred parking stalls. This shows a hundred and thirty-five, so you have some access there for overflow events or overlap and use from the park as well. You have areas outside of the building itself to extend the functionality and program capabilities of the site as well to provide outdoor patio areas, sculptural gardens, gathering zones that could be landscaped and beautified to enhance the indoor-outdoor experiences patrons come to this building. So those are some of the things that we were looking at. And then also providing access to a scene shop for construction and building of scenes and providing some clear access there to a loading dock that would deliver to the scene shop. As part of the process, we also went as far as developing a preliminary floor plan. Again, there's lots of options we looked at. This happened to be one of them that checked the box for a lot of the Arts Council desires and hopes for this project. And what we're looking at is a three-hundred-seat performance venue that with a thirty-by-fifty stage that could accommodate the orchestra of fifty to sixty pieces in the orchestra. And that it would be designed as a very multipurpose type of use so that it could not only serve for performances for the arts, but other performances and/or events and gathering things as well. And the lobby space would potentially double as an art gallery. So there was discussion about moving the Schwartz Gallery over to this location and it would double use. So, yeah, the idea again, that getting the most out of each of the spaces, the most out of every dollar that's put into the building was a primary concern. There's also a multipurpose room that, again, could serve as classrooms in the evening or a green room for performances or hosting for an art show. Any of those things could take place in this room. And then we have support spaces of changing rooms and dressing rooms, the scene shop, as I discussed before, with access to the backstage. And then additional support spaces and storage. Currently, storage is being held in various places. This would consolidate much of the storage from those locations into one location. There was also a study that we did evaluating the need to potentially extend the foundations beneath the stage to create additional storage. So that was evaluated and a cost was looked at as part of that as well. And that could be potentially an alternate to the plans as they develop forward, but something for consideration. Again, looking at the plans, we looked at very basic and preliminary building sections to understand sightlines and what the desire was there in terms of the rake of seats, the visibility, the experience, the level of intimacy as performances proceed. And then some preliminary, again, not a final design by any means, but some preliminary renderings giving you an idea of what giving you an idea of what a building might look like that resembles the floor plan as well. And a couple of things to note here is just the extension with the outdoor space and connectivity to the park-like setting with, you know, potential for gathering spaces, plaza, sculpture garden, all those types of things. But making the entrance really comfortable and prominent and inviting so that this facility can really act as a beacon to the city. Here, let me see, go to the next one. And then the view from seventy-eight hundred South, again, trying to entice as you come into the site, providing enough visibility and making it a welcoming experience for those. And these types of facilities have large volumes associated with them. And often what we try to do is we take opportunities on those volumes to provide marketing for large banners or branding that could take place. So the stage fly tower, for example, could have a large marquee banner that could represent or the current performance that's being done and things like that. So things for consideration. And then the other major goal, of course, of this study was to provide a very preliminary cost estimate, but a cost estimate that was based on at least some plans and some elevations that could be evaluated and provide a look at what the potential cost of this project would be. So we broke it out. You have the construction cost, which was about four-point-six million. That did not include technical catwalks, basement storage was an alternate, and then the site development and utilities was also added to that. So a total development cost there of five-point-eight million. An average architect's fee for a performing arts facility, we used the state fee schedule for that. And then there'd be specialty consultants as it moved forward, like audiovisual consultant, theatrical consultant, and postable consultants would all be engaged. So again, just an estimate on what that might be based upon those state standards. And then permit fees, owner costs, land, the value of the land, which is approximately a million dollars, the FFNE, which stands for Fixtures Furniture and Equipment, to furnish the building and equip the building, the orchestra cell, rigging hoist and control, and then contingency based upon the preliminary level of what these drawings and plans are at. So you have a soft cost of two-point-five million there. So a total development cost plus the soft cost escalation depending on when the project would be moved forward. So a total project cost of about eight-point-eight million. And again, this could go up or down depending on the design process and the decisions that are made with finishes and final sizes of the building and any sort of further investigation of the site utilities and so forth. But I think that gives you a pretty good budget to work with and/or to at least understand. The other item that we were tasked with is to put together a preliminary schedule. And David, actually, I'd like you to kind of run us through this if you could.
So on the left side of our schedule here is where we are today, the city council presentation. And the ultimate goal is to be able to, at the beginning of the new year, to go out to bid, because this is at the, take advantage of the bidding climate at that time of year. And for this, the RFP for Architectural Engineering Services would be around the end of April. And then part of this process that, as we have conversations with the Salt Lake Arts Council, that there's a potential for this project being able to fall under a grant that's about fifty percent of the project, which would be covered. And in discussions with them, the idea is that they would still be able to provide that fifty percent of the budget, but still allow city ownership of the facility. And the city arts grant application would be about mid-June. And then in the middle of November is when the county mayor's budget approval, or that's when the budget would be approved. And then the funds would be available by January of twenty-eighteen. So the schedule here that we're showing is to try to take advantage of that budget cycle for the county. Yeah, and also, as we looked at that eight-point-eight million, so looking at the county with the fifty percent covered by the county arts grant, that would be about four-point-four million dollars. And then the city of West Jordan would be able to, the property cost is valued at about a million dollars, that parcel of land. And then also, the property sale of the old library across the street was also evaluated as possibly helping the funds here. And those are, those two properties are currently being appraised. And our understanding is that by the end of this month, those are the final amounts on those will be available for consideration, which would leave the remaining budget amount at about two-point-four million dollars.
From there, any questions and thoughts that you have for us?
Questions? I had a question. Of the three-hundred thousand that was slated from the county and from West Jordan City, how much have we spent for design, preliminary and final design? How much has been spent to date?
Jim, you want to... I know what our fees were, and they were much lower than that.
Approximately less than ten thousand dollars so far is what's been spent.
Okay, so, and we had a hundred and fifty from the county and a hundred and fifty from West Jordan, right?
One-twenty-five, one-twenty-five.
Oh, one-twenty-five, okay. Okay, thanks. Did you have a question?
Any other questions?
Okay, great presentation. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Council? Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank these funny gentlemen for their help. I was able to attend one night, and it was, this wasn't one where they told us, this is what you need, this is how we do it, blah, blah, blah. It was the other way around. It was completely committee-driven. And I just wanted to make sure I provided that perspective since Councilmember McConaughey's not here tonight. It was a very good process. We had the Arts Council involved. They had all the groups involved. It wasn't just like, we're just going to focus on theater and say, let theater run this. It was a very collaborative effort on parts of the entire council. I just wanted the council to be aware of that. It was a very good process.
Okay, we don't need any action on this tonight. We move to item seven B, discussion and possible action regarding gateway aesthetics. Ryan Clay?
Thank you, Mayor. As per discussion this year in the two thousand seventeen strategic planning session, we were tasked with bringing back landscape designs, examples and estimated budgets for the gateways going into our, coming into our city. City staff compiled a presentation showing different examples of what we have and what we could do, with some estimated costs also. Staff is seeking direction from you folks tonight on what they would like the gateways of the city to look like moving forward and so we can have some planning for the future. So I'm going to turn the time over to Dave Naylor. He's the Deputy Parks Director. He'll be doing the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor. So briefly, I'll go through the slideshow. Specifically, on the aesthetics, we were directed to look at Seventy-South and approximately eleven-hundred West, and then also Ninety-South and nine-hundred West, being some of the west-flow traffic coming into our city out of, out from the river bottoms. Briefly, we'll talk about some challenges of these sites, look over some concepts, and have some pictures and discussion to kind of give you some visual information of what it could look like and some examples from some other areas in the community. On Seventy-South, some of the challenges are, it's on a UDOT right-of-way. And so anything that we did that impacted into the road, we'd have to get permits to do any work into those roadways. And then also with that, we'd have to get plan reviews and have UDOT approve those plans. The good thing about the UDOT right-of-way is that it could give us some possible avenues to try to work with them, to try to get some funding for those projects out of UDOT funds. And so in talking to capital projects, they say that there's generally some money available that we might be able to, you know, get from UDOT to proceed in some of these projects. Currently, we have a lot of topography. This is Seventy-South looking west. And so as you come across the river, this is what we're looking at. We, basically, right now, all we have is a sign kind of sitting on a barren hill. And so in talking about aesthetics, we'd like to improve this site as we move up through. And so a lot of the cost is going to come into play with the topography of this site. And so I just kind of put a little concept plan together. And so we'd be adding about a ten-to-fifteen-foot green space buffer along both sides here and then transitioning up into the existing turf areas of these developments here. And so this would be a recessed area. This is actually a tiered system, so there's actually three tiers built in this design. This, these other areas, the lighter areas, would be some cobble rock areas. And then these brown areas would be some planter beds with shrubbery and then also trees. And then on this area, this light green area, this would be just a native grass space. And so it'd be a tiered system. The cost estimate to do this project is just under a million dollars. About a third of that cost comes in retaining work. Retaining work is very expensive. And then we also have to be able to drain the backsides of those walls. And so there'd be a gravel bed in the backside of those walls to provide drainage so we don't lose that hillside. And then the best example I could give through the community is over in Riverton, coming out of the river bottom. The topography over there is very similar to what we have on Seventy-South. Just to point out, in this, in this example here, they don't have the extensive retaining work that is in the prior plan, which would build a lot better tiered system aesthetically. It would be superior to this picture example. But this does give you kind of a visual about what that gateway could look like with some planter pockets and then the cobble rock areas. Moving on to Ninety-South, Ninety-South's a lot more complex. We don't have the area over there to work with. UDOT right-of-way that we're dealing with, and I'll mention, just keep in mind these power lines as we move through this presentation. But, so we're working with UDOT right-of-way again and talking to capital projects. They said that UDOT does have a project slated to expand Ninety-South to Seven Lanes in the near future. They were given projections that they were thinking that they were not going to go outside of the gutter edge. And so they're going to try to make that work without buying, purchasing land. So that's going to limit some of our options that we have on Ninety-South. And then possible negotiations with adjacent landowners and then UDOT to try to work in some landscaped areas through this, because there is still some potential in this area, but it's a little more complicated than it is over on Seventy-South. And then, again, to mention the high-voltage line, as far as the trees and different things that you'd put in those spaces, you're going to have to be fairly selective in what you can do under those high-voltage transition lines. So just to kind of give you an idea of what we could do, if we could acquire some land, I went through and kind of identified parcels up along here that do have some potential to be able to build in. More potential down through the river bottom, we could do some wider park strips down through this area. At this point, without, you know, purchasing adjacent land, it's very limited up through here. But they do have a five-foot stamped border going in between their sidewalk and the gutter edge that if UDOT would allow us to landscape that area, it would enhance the aesthetic value of this gateway. To give you a couple of examples, working through some park strips, we'll just kind of transition through some different sizes so you guys can see. As we move through these sizes, sizes of a park strip, you'll see that the aesthetic value is enhanced significantly. And so this is an example off of fourteen-hundred, sorry, this is, yeah, fourteen-hundred South coming out of the river bottoms into South Jordan. They just have a ten-foot easement right here, so you get five feet of sod and you get a wall and sidewalk there. And then they do have trees in here. They're young. You just can't see them in this picture. But there's very little space to work with in this, in this area. And then the same example of a ten-foot, but moving into a cobble rock. And so with the cobble rock, it definitely sterilizes the area versus that green of the turf. And the cost difference between the turf and the cobble on the installs fairly insignificant. And obviously, on the maintenance end, the cobble rock area is less to maintain as far as water goes. And then also, you know, your week-to-week maintenance, so. As we expand those areas, we move into a fifteen-foot easement, turf and trees. And so you get six feet, or sorry, five feet of sidewalk, and then you get it nine feet. Well, I think they do, actually do six feet sidewalks and then nine feet park strips. And so you start to increase that aesthetic value as we move up in the space. Two different concepts, just to point out here. You got turf right up to the trees, and then over on this side, you have kind of some decorative curving and mulch bed that separates the trees with the turf. And so a couple of different concepts that you could go with this wider space. And then obviously, as we move up in size, we're going to move up in the price of these projects. Moving up to twenty-foot, this is a non-turfed area, twenty-foot easement. So a fairly sterile approach going through the frontage with just some rock and then some planter beds and trees along the wall to soften that wall. And then an example of a thirty-foot, personally, I like this design. It starts to incorporate some turf, and so you get some more greenery. The Jordan Valley War Conservancy considers this to be comparable to local scape. This is a concept that they're promoting right now as far as their local scape goes. They've acknowledged that this zero scape concept that they pushed years ago is, it ran into some troubles with it, and also the aesthetic value, it tends to be low and undesirable. And so they've started to do this local scape where they start to add some turf area into it, some bush areas, and then also some cobble rock areas. To point out, one concern I do have with this is generally when you have these rocks, we've ran into a lot of vandal problems when they're adjacent to vinyl fence areas. Kids generally like to throw rocks, and vinyl fences don't like rocks. So we have had a fair amount of complaints when there's vinyl associated with cobble rock areas. Obviously, the cost in this example goes way up. You've increased the space, and it gets a lot, a lot more expensive, so. This is an example off of Old Bingham Highway as you move just up towards forty-eight hundred West. This example gives you more turf area and then also some beds to soften the walls and to break up that turf area as you move through. This area is generally about eighty percent turf versus twenty percent, you know, beds. And so your water use is higher in these areas. General maintenance value of it is, in my opinion, is higher. You get the green grass, and it just seems to be more pleasant to me than the sterile approach. The other thing about this is it does receive weekly maintenance. And so it tends to hold in there as far as the aesthetic value better than some of your cobble rock areas that generally grow a lot of weeds. And generally, on our contracts, we set those cobble rock areas And generally on our contracts, we set those cobble rock areas up for a once-a-month ma- maintenance schedule. And so they see weekly maintenance, which obviously does drive up the maintenance costs, but the aesthetic value of this landscape generally is more desirable. Uh, some questions and concerns and just to try to get a little direction from you guys of where you want staff to move forward from here. Is how important is the, uh, is it to enhance the aesthetic value of these gateways, uh, through, through West Jordan? Um, obviously, we were just talking about two specifically tonight, but we have gateways, um, all through our city that, uh, could also see some of these same approaches. Um, they do become a little more complicated, especially like Redwood Road where there's limited space. But, um, keep this in mind that, you know, we can expand this to, to a lot greater scale than just Seventieth and, and Ninetieth. And then, uh, to have an overall master plan of these gateway, gateways and improvements, um, and basically just developing a plan so we can move forward. If that's desired, um, by council for staff to try to generate a master plan of how we're going to improve these, um, gateways moving into our community. Um, and then overall, we just need to know kind of what designs are desired by council. So we have some direction, uh, you know, to move forward. And then also whatever designs on those directions, we'd have to make sure that if it conflicted with code, that we match the code with your guys' desires as far as the design goes. And then, uh, we'd have to identify funding to make the improvement and then the long-term maintenance, we'd have to identify a funding source of how we're going to continue to maintain these at a high standard, so... Uh, with that, I'd just ask you for any questions that you may have.
Questions from council?
Councilmember Burton.
You mentioned that the Conservatory District prefers not going with the zero scape, but putting some greenery mixed in with it. Can you elaborate on that?
So, um, we met with Jordan Valley War Conservancy about two months ago, um, just to kind of, um, correlate some of our code ideas with them. And in our discussion, um, they, they had, uh, some conceptual plans of the local scape and currently that's what their, um, model is pushing, um, in the community and, and down through the gardens. And so when people go in there, they're, they're, um, kind of trying to embrace that local scape concept, um, versus the, uh, just the straight gravel sterile, um, look. And so, um, the, the, the concepts they gave us are about fifty percent turf and then they'll start mixing, um, the beds and, um, cobble rock areas, uh, in those areas. So, um, they were very helpful and, and very pleasant to meet with and, and, uh, offered a lot of resources to us as we move forward. And so, um, I, I think you would all agree that, uh, they're great assets to our community and that we should partner with them and try to meet some of those desires as we move forward, didn't us?
Mayor, if I may pull up?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I agree that they are a great asset for us and we should be using them. So they would prefer, recommend, instead of all just the rocks with a few trees mixed in, putting some greenery in there even though it increases maintenance and water because of the way it looks or because, what are the other advantages?
So, so they, what they did is they identified that, uh, they used to have a lot of plant lists, a recommended plant list and stuff. And so they've identified that instead of focusing on water-wise plants, they're more, more concerned about how the, the irrigation systems are designed. And so, um, a lot of point source irrigation, underground irrigation, um, and the irrigation industry has come a long ways as far as efficiencies and heads, um, and controllers. And so they're pushing for, um, the design as, as far as these to be more efficient as far as how the irrigation systems are designed versus net, uh, the plant materials and, and things that they had, uh, pushed in the past. Um, like I say, the plant lists were very common, um, water-wise plant list. And, and so they've, they've kind of took a different approach to it as far as looking at more of the, the point source irrigations, um, to be more efficient in the way we water rather than, um, the, the, the material that is going to be efficient in using the water, so... Yep.
I had a question, David.
Yeah.
Do you believe that on Seventieth South, you'd run into any interference with, uh, UDOT cooperating in, um, doing the improvements that you showed on Seventieth South? I don't believe Ninetieth South, they're planning on expanding up. I think we ought to probably wait on that, but, uh, if, uh, we had the funding available, uh, would you believe that UDOT would run any interference in creating a greenscape there?
So in talking to Dave Murphy and Greg Davenport, um, on that issue, just to try to get a little bit of background on UDOT, um, they, they didn't tend to believe that it would be an issue, um, because outside of that, the roadway, um, you know, those improvements, as long as the city was, was, you know, funding it, uh, they didn't see that there would be any issue, um, with UDOT supporting this. Um, a- and they also thought that there might be, you know, more support as far as getting a little funding out of them. Um, I think it would be definitely a good avenue to, to approach to see if we could get some funding from them. But, uh, uh, yeah, Dave Murphy, he had mentioned that he didn't think that it would be, uh, very difficult, um, you know, to approach them and get approval for this project, especially if we had the funding in place, but... Thank you.
Counselor Nichols.
Thank you. I don't really have a question for Dave other than just, thank you. This is very helpful. Uh, good job.
Thanks.
Really, really excited that you presented it this way. It's really important for us to see the costs. Um, and I just really have a comment, so really not a question, but, um, I've been pretty outspoken on this issue. I think this is one of our most important economic development tools in the city, is this. And I think we've all, for the most part, agreed on that. I don't even think we've had any dissension on that point. But maybe what we could do as we move forward, look at this, I really like the idea of focusing on Seventieth South, especially with the cost. I mean, it's, it's huge, but we, we can focus on one for now and start to work the others into the long-term plan. And perhaps at the same time, we, we try to address every entrance and ensure that even all the smaller entrances, uh, at Thirteenth, at Redwood, at Twenty-second, Twenty-seventh, each one at least has a small mark, mark, market that's very apparent. It's really important that we address this. And so I, it's, it's good to, to view this and, and it's very helpful, especially thank you for demonstrating a, a really good local scape. Because you can clearly see how different it is from any other approach. And I think we really need to look at that. But for me, it's like the vinyl fence is clearly a problem, so the answer is the rock's fine, just don't put vinyl on. It's going to have to be something else. It's going to have to be a stone fence, but then make sure it can be sandblasted because graffiti could be a problem. So you just have to be thinking of all those different perspectives. But I, I really think, this is me speaking, but for every dollar we put and invest in this, it's going to be back tenfold in property values, aesthetics and, and the businesses. I mean, when you come to West Jordan, it's, you're here. And it lets them know very, just apparently, you are, it's obvious that you've come to the city. And that's really what, what my vision of this would be, so thank you very much. Very helpful.
You're welcome. I, I, I tend to agree. Just, that's where that master plan would come in, is I think there's a, a lot broader scope than what I presented out tonight, but we could identify that in a, a well-thought-out master plan.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, that was exactly the direction I was, I was thinking about is this master plan. And I'd like to see that carried on throughout not just the entrances or the gateways to the city, but throughout the city. It's no good to say, "Welcome to West Jordan," have a very big sign, it's, you know, a hundred yards further down the road. It's like, "Yeah, welcome to West Jordan." So, uh, yeah, carrying that, those types of improvements throughout, especially the major arterial roads in the downtown area of the city, I think is, uh, has got to be worked into that as well. It, it, it does look good to put lipstick on a pig. We gotta make bacon. So, um, yeah, that's, that's my only comment is, is let's take it, a- as far as a master plan goes, take it a step further. Let's look at the costs that are going to be involved all the way through the city to get this done complete and done correctly. And, yeah, like, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be a long process regardless, but, uh, but, yeah, laying out of plans, obviously, first step.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
So I'd say just to follow up with that, then we'd have to be working with Capitol Projects, planning, and then also Parks at Support to make this come together, so... Thanks, David. Anything else?
Okay, thank you.
I would like to move that we direct staff to finalize plans for the Seventieth South entrance, using the funding source from, uh, the eleven million that sits in the RDA as, uh, we could borrow from that, uh, as a payback plan, um, and move at least the Seventieth South forward, um, to, uh, as soon as it can be, um, practically done. I just think that we need to set the precedence. Uh, I agree wholeheartedly with, uh, what Councilmember Nichols stated, that, uh, that whatever we do now and we start this process immediately, uh, we'll pay back in large dividends with our economic development plan. So I would like to direct staff to do that. And let's see what you all think. Do I have a second for that? Second. Okay, I have the motion by Mayor Rolfe, second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion to that motion. I'd like to state that I, I agree. We need to master plan the entrances and the interior of the city as well, although that's on a grander, uh, scale. But starting somewhere is, uh, is a good move. And I think what I saw there on the Seventieth design, I think in-house design has worked very well. I think we can incorporate that at a reasonable cost and at least move one step closer to the end result, so... Do we need, uh, full call on this? All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That's the direction. Thank you. Item, uh, excuse me, the next four items have been moved to the twenty-sixth of April on the agenda, continued. So we are at item seven G, discussion and possible action regarding self-storage facilities within the city of West Jordan. David?
Yes, Scott will go ahead and address this item.
So I didn't, uh, ever expect to stand before you, Mayor, and council to talk about storage units, but I, I think it is important, uh, that I bring this to your attention. Over the past eighteen months or so, we've seen a huge influx in the number of applications for storage units. And, uh, I've got a, a few slides to show you, just, uh, general locations and, yeah, that, that'll work. You know, as, as the, uh, as this, the, the planning department looks at various, oh, let me get through here, various land uses across the city, we want to make sure that, uh, we, we, uh, put into, to action the council's vision, uh, of this community and make sure that the, the highest and best uses, uh, are, are implemented. So, uh, real quickly, the, the history, you know, this is in your report too, but, uh, there's been kind of this back and forth with storage units over the years, uh, in West Jordan. But, uh, you know, historically, from nineteen eighty to two thousand, uh, storage units were allowed in CG or M1 and M2. Uh, we had an influx at that time and the council, uh, changed the code to, to protect our, our heavy industrial areas and protect our commercial, uh, properties as well for, for, again, higher and better uses than storage units. And so from that time, uh, till now, we've only allowed self-storage facilities in our M1, our light industrial district. And that's worked out well. We've gotten a few here and there through the years. Um, but like I said, over the past eighteen months, we've seen a huge influx. And so, um, the Planning Commission and the council, uh, by design, uh, typically won't see site plan develop, or site plan, uh, applications in our industrial zones. That's to spur economic development and it's worked out well. So, here's the trend. Uh, you can see from twenty fifteen till now, uh, we, we've got a, a bunch of, uh, applications in the works. And in fact, since, uh, I queued this up, uh, for, you know, to, to have the council receive this information a couple of weeks ago, uh, we have just today, uh, a brand-new application for another storage unit across from Dannen. And so we, we feel that this trend will continue. Uh, we don't see any, any slowdown. So with that, here are our concerns. Um, again, from the, from Landy's perspective, storage units rank really low, kind of the bottom rung of, of, of highest and best use. Uh, we do believe that they, they do serve a purpose here in the community, but to, to use prime, uh, industrial property for, for a use that has typically no sales tax and very low property tax, uh, we think that, that there's a, some restrictions that should come into play. Uh, this is just a quick example. This is the, uh, extra space storage off of, uh, Redwood Road, and you probably can't see that too well, but last year in property taxes, West Jordan collected just, uh, just, well, just south of, uh, seven thousand dollars. Not a lot of benefit to having that particular use. So these are the options that, uh, that, uh, we, we listed in your report, uh, one through four, the pros and cons to each. Staff is recommending that, uh, you look at option number three, um, require a conditional use permit for, for storage units in the M1, keep it in the M1, with very specific criteria. Uh, the best comparison that we have currently in our code would be, uh, to treat them like, uh, pawn shops and bell bond stores where we have spacing requirements. Right now, I, and I've got a map here on the other page that shows, and it's really hard to see, but, uh, the light blue are existing storage, uh, and, and the red are, are proposed applications right now. We've got in the queue. But i- i- we're, again, we're seeing a lot of, of applications down in Bagley Industrial Park, uh, and, and Bingham Industrial Park. And they just, the applications keep coming in. And so our, our request to the council tonight is to, to get direction, uh, your thoughts, um, and perhaps to buy us a little time, uh, since the, the community is now aware of, of this, I guess, pending code change. If you direct us to do that, is, uh, perhaps, uh, put a temporary land use ordinance onto the next agenda so that we can buy a little bit of time so we don't have a, a run on the bank, basically, so...
And if I could just ask, if that is the intent of the city council, that you include in that, um, motion for the temporary land use to include today's date? So that once it's enacted, maybe two weeks, three weeks, four months from now, whatever that enacted date, it's clear that we're reaching back to tonight's events to capture anybody who has submitted an application or will later submit an application, that they'll be subject to those, uh, land uses? Yes, sir?
I had a question. Uh, if we put a moratorium until such time, uh, we could put a moratorium on tonight until such time as we have a chance to read the review rather than to rapidly move to a, a change, um, would that be appropriate? That would be legal and appropriate, right?
It would be appropriate. You can extend that moratorium, but I prefer it called temporary land use, uh, ordinance, to a period of no more than six months.
Thank you.
One other thing for the council to consider, so if, if the council does direct us to, to create an ordinance with spacing requirements, um, just to paint the picture, uh, I drew that circle there on there, on that, that's a thousand-foot radius. Um, that may or may not be enough. We can certainly do more, more, uh, homework on that. Uh, another example, that, that next circle is a quarter mile or just over thirteen hundred, uh, feet. Um, and you can see how that, that would, would space out these things. One thing that, that, uh, if you want to treat them completely like cash checking, or, you know, uh, check cashing places or, or bell bonds, those actually have a, a cap, uh, citywide. Um, you can certainly, uh, do that. Um, we, we put that cap in there, um, that, those types of businesses typically have some turnover. Uh, one of the concerns that we have with storage units is that once they're in, they're in. And, and once they, they get filled out, they're, they're going to stay there for, for a long time. I don't know if a cap is really necessary, uh, in that regard. To, I think spacing would be, would, would handle this, this influx, uh, fairly well. in that regard. I think spacing would be, would handle this, this influx fairly well. There are appropriate times and places for these types of, of uses. If you have poor access, a weird shape, leftover, remnant piece of property, great, fantastic. But to gobble up prime industrial property, staff sees that as a concern. So.
One question, I'm really concerned, the red indicates a proposed, yeah, that one, exactly. That falls within the seventeen hundred acres that we have put in our, yeah, exactly.
I believe that's just outside of the boundary, Mayor. This is the Mountain D. Court, this is not a very good map. And so this is.
So it is outside.
It is outside of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks. Any questions? Thanks, Scott. Council? Councilmember Burton?
Having had a storage unit most of the years of my time here in West Jordan, I think it's important that we still permit them to be here. So I'm not in favor of stopping storage units altogether. So that would eliminate option one. Option two, just increase some more work for our staff to do. I'm not in favor of that either. So I would not be in favor of option two. Option three appears to be quite reasonable, putting some control and deciding where they're going to be so that we use best use within the city. So option three would be very reasonable. Then option four is doing nothing and leaving the problem to be where it is and letting the problem continue to get worse. I think that's probably not a good idea. So I would probably be in favor of, of option three at this stage because there is a need for storage units. We need to provide that for some people, but we could control where they are. So that's kind of what I'm going to endorse.
Councilmember Nichols?
Just based on hearing that, how about obviously we move forward with option three, managing the city code without affecting data today?
I will second that motion. We have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Mayor Rolfe. Discussion to the motion.
Thank you. I think that the motion clarification helps clarify both for the council and for this community moving forward, what it is we're going to try to establish.
Mr. Rolfe?
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Vote pass this form in favor.
Item seven H, discussion and possible action regarding review of the Redwood Road streetscape plan. David?
Ray McCandless will address this item.
Ray?
Mayor and members of the council, I think the discussion on Seventieth South and Ninetieth South is a great segue into this, this discussion item. Redwood Road is a state highway that's owned and maintained also by UDOT. Anything that happens within the UDOT right of way needs to have UDOT approval. Up until a couple of years ago, I didn't realize this, but Redwood Road's about seventy miles long. It goes from Boundfall all the way to a little town called Alberta in Utah County. It's a major transportation corridor in the city and it serves a number of communities along the Wasatch Front. It's very important to the city of West Jordan. The residents not only use it as a, as a roadway to commute on, but they also use it on a local level. So they get, use it for access to their, their homes and their places of business. There are a lot of businesses that, that call Redwood Road home. So it's very important to the, to West Jordan's history, its economy and its identity. Back in two thousand and twelve, when the general plan, the committee was working on the general plan, they understood the importance of this corridor as, as a, as a regional transportation corridor and maintain it as such. But they're also interested in seeing what they could do to enhance the appearance of the street to, to make it for those, the people that are using the street know that now you're in West Jordan, I think as Councilmember Nichols was talking about. And they also wanted to make it safer for pedestrians. And so to accomplish this, they came up with several goals that are, I think, listed in your, your packets. One of those is just to take, to strengthen the gateways of the city, to look at ways to enhance the roadway. And in order to implement these goals, the city council had set aside some funds to get a consultant on board, the city retained services of MGBNA and Affairs and Peers to take a look at the existing conditions along Redwood Road and, and come up with some, some options for you to take a look at tonight. We're looking at, this is just a business item, so it's just more of a discussion item. What we want to do at this time is just to make sure that we're headed in the right direction. We will, we'll talk about, we'll, our game plan is to take this back to the Planning Commission, once we get direction from you folks, and then we'll bring it back to you for, for final adoption. We'll also be talking in the future about funding sources and phasing how this thing's going to be implemented. But right now, we're just kind of looking at, we head in the right direction with, with the options that are, that are presented for you this, this evening. So with that, I'd just like to turn the time over to our consultants, MGB and Affairs and Peers, and they've just got a short presentation to just give you an idea of what they've looked at. Thanks.
Thanks, Ray. Mayor, City Council. It's nice to be with you today. It's been fun to work with in your community and do this project. We've completed quite a few corridors like this in Park City and Augen and even in Taylorsville, on the other side of the community there improving Redwood Road. I think it's a, it's a great road. It's a road that kind of divides the community right now because of its width. So we're finding ways to make it something to be pedestrian friendly and be a real asset. Kind of adds to what the Parks Department's doing in the gateways. This could be the first phase of bringing some green into the downtown, downtown area and the whole, the whole city. We've been around doing these projects and we're excited to put this one together. So with that, I'd like to introduce Dan Sontek from our office. He managed the project. One thing I, we thought about this when starting this project, funding is a big deal for this. We, it can be as small as a few million dollars to do one little section. Do the whole section, we estimate it's somewhere between twenty and twenty-five million dollars, however far there you want to go to implement all these improvements. But in the long run, it's going to be something to be a huge advantage for the city and, and make quite a nice impression for one of the major corridors that, that goes to the city. So with that, I'll, I'll have Dan do a little presentation.
I'd like to thank the council again for hearing us out tonight. This was a good project and I think you'll, I hope you'll enjoy it too. So the goals and objectives that were originally set forth was to provide a long-range vision for the corridor improvement. That improvement is intended to be significant such that it sets the city of West Jordan apart from other cities along the corridor. Within the report, we identify strategies to improve the aesthetics of the corridor, which goes hand in hand with improving the pedestrian environment. The plan provides strategies for improving the safety and function of vehicle circulation, which with all of these combined, we believe will improve the economic health of the commercial centers and the neighborhoods along the corridor. So existing conditions along the corridor, as Ray mentioned, the Redwood Road is a regional, a very wide, regionally significant highway. Both local and long, and regional trips are taken on the corridor, passes through, within West Jordan, it passes through major commercial centers and neighborhoods, and is crossed by several major east-west arterial corridors that we talked about earlier this evening. And there's a tracks line that crosses it as well. Physical conditions of the corridor, it's, you can't read these, they're small text, so I'll tell them to you. There, it's a hundred and six feet right of way, plus or minus, three travel lanes in both directions with a two-way left turn lane. There's a narrow park strip and sidewalk or just sidewalk on the edge. And there's no shoulder, no on-street parking, lots of individual driveway accesses, all these purple dots along this corridor is a driveway access. There's roughly two hundred and seventeen that we counted. And there's a non-existent bicycle environment, which was one thing that they wanted us to look at. Collision rate is very high on this road, higher than average for a roadway of this size, possibly caused by some of these physical features that we've talked about. For example, there's an average of one driveway every fifty-four feet all along the corridor in West Jordan, where, whereas UDOT has a recommendation of no more than one driveway every three hundred and fifty feet. So there's a lot of driveways. So the, the plan, we studied several scenarios. Some were more progressive than others, but through discussion with UDOT, UTA, and West Jordan City Engineering and Planning Personnel, the stat, we came up with this basic idea that was determined more, the most feasible for this, for this roadway, as well as we pushed the envelope in, in a couple of areas we'll talk about. So we'll maintain those three lanes of traffic in both areas. It would be nice to take away, to take out one lane, you know, widen the pedestrian zone, include a protected bike lane with a, with a planter or elevation change. But traffic demand will only increase for this roadway. Anybody that drove here this evening to try to get here, there's, oh, there's a lot of cars on that road. And, but we do propose that this, the two-way turn lane, which is all along the road, will become a planted median where, everywhere where possible. This will help control and limit those left-hand turns coming out of all those driveways, increase the safety of the road. The median also provides an opportunity for beautification, which we'll talk about, talk about later. Intersections on the corridor, we propose will be enhanced for pedestrian safety as well as to increase the visual appeal that we'll talk about in a minute. There's a few mid-block crosswalks along the corridor that we propose they should be enhanced and made more frequent where feasible and where needed. And then absolutely, we propose economizing the driveways, especially at the commercial centers, to limit all the turn movements coming out of there and focus it in certain areas. So a large component of this study was to discuss place making or improving the aesthetics and the pedestrian environment. As this quote says, effective place making cannot occur without attention to the streetscapes and walkability. A place can't, well, the condition of the streetscape, we think, affects our ability and our desire to walk there. A place can't be, if it can't be experienced and become significant if, if people don't want to be there. So the pedestrian environment on Redwood Road through West Jordan is rather uncomfortable. There's no shoulder, it's a very thin sidewalk. That roadway is marked at forty-five miles per hour. Most people drive just over the speed limit. So it's, feels a little bit hostile to someone just walking. And we believe the application of some simple principles to enhance safety will also enhance the look and feel of Redwood Road and will therefore create an inviting pedestrian environment. So we show here furnishings, application of seating, trash receptacles, lights. They all work in concert, kind of create life on the street, bring people in. There's this idea of including vertical elements or things that, that bound and border entrances, create a gateway effect we talked about earlier tonight, indicating that the user has arrived. He can hang banners and lights, or these, these pieces can function just as art in themselves. This is in Park City, a project we worked on. And then special paving helps provide interest and emphasis and communicates clearly the, the division between pedestrian zones and vehicle, vehicle zones, making the space safer, making it more comfortable to walk and makes it more attractive. So here's a couple more shots of existing conditions out there where you're right next to that busy roadway. Sometimes there's a narrow plant strip, but that's really narrow sidewalk. So in addition to the planted median, which we talked about, we propose increasing the right of way to include a ten-foot wide park strip and then a ten-foot wide multi-use pathway. We say multi-use because you could get, you could have people walking and you can also incorporate that bicycle component that's missing on this street. I don't think, it's, won't be safe ever to include a bicycle lane in this roadway. There's no room, there's no shoulder. So this would create that buffer and that feeling of safety that is missing on this road. Ten feet would be an ample space to include large street trees and create a very green corridor. So the concept we propose for West Jordan City includes all these place making elements that we discussed. We propose the incorporation of a common paving feature that can be repeated, creating vehicle, pedestrian safety, visual interest, and, and rhythm. And this creates an opportunity to locate furnishings, light poles, in outdoor rooms that are bounded and bordered by the paving idea. And then we also include the vertical element idea that would occur at intersections or places that are important. Creates a bookend or a beginning to a space. There's a lot of fun things you can include on these things like signage, wayfinding signs, street signs, lighting, banners, just to name a few. So this image, these images show how the pattern is applied over a large area. You can see how that repeated pattern creates the rhythm. And the generous park strip would be planted with these shaded trees, including the median in the center of the road to complete the idea. The image on the right shows how the intersection would work, how paving enhancements would enhance the aesthetic and create a safe pedestrian environment. People would slow down, vehicles would slow down, and pedestrians can feel more comfortable. And this shows how the vertical elements would work as a gateway marker and how it all kind of works together in concert. So where, where this gets applied, we think that a single design idea is, is not appropriate for the whole corridor. We, with our plan, the plan calls for enhancing the pedestrian environment like this in the commercial areas primarily, in those RDA-identified commercial areas. We propose implementing the roadway improvements, including the, the planted median in the residential areas, but allow, allow the commercial areas to serve at those gateways in the areas of emphasis, creating a sense of arrival when people get there. We think it would be easier to implement this wide, because this involves, you know, increasing the right of way. We think that would be easier to implement in the areas that are being redeveloped in the commercial areas where there's space rather than, than taking residential areas. Although eventually, it would be ideal to have this wide sidewalk up and down the corridor to unify the corridor as time goes on. So we were asked to look at the economic opportunities associated with this area and do kind of a overview of what's happening. It was identified that the commercial areas are kind of in decline, or not functioning as well as they could be, rather. There's some strengths and benefit, and good things happening. There's a, you know, a young population, a lot of millennials in West Jordan that could go to work. There's a light rail, there's a lot of daily traffic down that road, a lot of visibility. But there's a lot of impediments to reach, to commercial growth. There's, all the commercial areas are old, there's There's a high vacancy rate indicating they're not performing as well as they could be. There's no vacant land for new development. Everything would have to be redeveloped. And there's a lot of proximity to other shopping centers, so people are traveling outside of West Jordan to shop. So this shows opportunities where, what people are doing outside of West Jordan. There's car sales outside. So this indicates that somebody that wants to establish some commercial opportunity, they could look at this study and see what's missing. What's more important is the opportunities by area, that the redevelopment areas or the existing commercial zones that are identified is where the emphasis should be, rather than trying to make new areas. This corresponds with our plan that we propose. This is where the improvements, the city-sponsored improvements should occur. Because we think that the streetscape improvement would help the economy grow. There's evidence to suggest that these improvements we're proposing would have a positive effect. Taylorsville City, as Jay mentioned, they reported to us that the improvements that they've done on Redwood Road have helped their commercial activity. It has helped it grow. And they were going to do a formal study to study the before and after effect. Their project rolled kind of through the economic downturn, and so they kind of bagged that idea. But overall, they feel that their commercial centers are growing and are doing well. And they told us that roughly 80% of the properties along Redwood Road in Taylorsville have redeveloped or been remodeled, and they have a positive outlook on the future. Whereas in West Jordan, everything is just kind of getting by. In fact, during the study, we noticed that there was a carnival setup in the Target parking lot, which is all good and fun, but we think that successful shopping centers don't need to have carnivals to get people to come over. So there's, that's an indication something's wrong. But we think that things we're proposing in this planner would help. So just to review the recommendations, the plan includes, and well, it identifies exactly where improvements should be applied all along the corridor. There's multiple sheets just like this. This is where the city hall is. So that intersection out front would receive those improvements, for example, in the planted medians. And the place-making pedestrian environment improvements, all here. It shows where it can be applied immediately. So this is the enhanced idea. We identify where the land is vacant, where it needs to be redeveloped now. We think that the idea can be applied immediately to those areas and then where it can be applied in the future as those areas get developed. And ultimate, also, we looked at costs just from a magnitude, high level. I don't think this includes cost to acquire the land if there were any costs associated with that, assuming the land was owned by the city, what it would cost to develop this idea throughout the corridor from border to border, just roughly that number there. That concludes my presentation. We can open it up to some questions if you guys have any.
Could you estimate the cost from 7800 South intersection as you designed it to the track station just south of city hall? And identify a cost that would be associated, would that be possible? Of the same type of design you just...
From 7800 South to the city hall intersection?
Yeah, up to the track station. So this area, this redevelopment area across the street before it gets developed had that landscape treatment and then the entire intersection. Could you get that, could you give us a number for that and get it to staff at some near future point?
Yeah, we can do that.
Mayor, just kidding. Those three intersections are those three development areas. If you divide the 10 million by three, that's going to give a real rough number. It's going to be around 3 million for that corridor, because that's about what the commercial...
I'm sorry, how much did you say?
3 million, so a third of the 10 million, so 3.3 million. We can get you a more detailed number, just give you an idea tonight of an estimate where it'd be, but we'll give you a little tight number.
I just, I like what I see. I'd just like to identify an area we could start with again. We can't, 17 million is out of reach, but possibly with some cooperation with UDOT and ourselves, we might be able to do a section and at least start the process.
When we initially started the project, one of the ideas with this plan would be something you take the legislative station, have them help get some funding for the project. So UDOT, UTA, I think North Street is probably the best source of funding to help implement this whole thing, along with the city.
I've been promised it for three solid years and we haven't got anything yet, so.
Okay, we'll keep working.
We'll see what happens.
Now you have a tool that can hopefully get you over the hump.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you. Questions from council? Great presentation. Look forward to implementing some of it.
Let's do it.
I'm asking for a move to recess for five minutes.
Move to recess for five minutes.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion of the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Business item 7I, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 17-41, approving or denying a policy regarding authority for city staff or certain land use issues. David Ricky.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is not an effort to change code, but rather to provide for direction as a policy stance, how the council feels about providing the zoning administrator authority to identify those aspects of a development agreement once approved that will later be adapted and changed as financing, the realities of timing being what they are. We're trying to allow Scott Langford or whoever the zoning administrator is the authority to make representations with your support. We're not trying to change the code, but we're just trying to recognize that authority that the zoning administrator would have. Mr. Langford's here, if you would like to ask him questions or myself.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question. You just said we're not changing code. The resolution is quoting, is it just reciting 135J10E? Is that just being quoted in the resolution just because it's already in code?
It is already in code. So one example that... It is already in code. So, one example that Mr. Langford and I talked about would be those scenarios that are set out specifically three A, B, C, and D, and they're kind of at this point not codified. So we were hoping to have that clarification as a policy change.
So those, those three, three A, B, and C are not currently in the code?
That's my understanding. And just to clarify, that, if, if, for example, you were trying to change the preliminary or final site plan, the zoning administrator would have the ability to say, "This is major enough that we need to go before the council." Currently, you have prior practice that we're trying to rectify. That was a prior staffer that made adjustments that I don't think this council would approve of.
If I may, Councilman Jacob's, you're, Jacob, sorry, no S.
Steve was eating.
You, you're referring to three A, B, C, and D?
Right.
That is currently code. That is codified.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah. And, but, and so that's section one of your report. Section two provides the clarification to the code thirteen-five-JA-ten-E, which, which is already in place.
I appreciate, I stand corrected. I appreciate that clarification.
I was pulling up the code. You were just faster than us. Appreciate that. Thanks.
Other questions? Councilmember Burton.
Just a comment on this, if I may, as I read through this, I like the fact that it removes some ambiguity, anyway, some confusion, so that's those who are applying for additional work that they're doing or changes, and those who are approving that will know where they stand and know when it's appropriate to pass them on or when it's appropriate for them to do themselves, which would, I think, would save us some staff time and some extra confusion and help expedite, expedite the work to make this happen better. So, my recommendation would be to approve this resolution.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you. Um, perhaps a question for Mr. Bricky regarding this section. Would, we could move forward with passing this night, which is fine. Um, but in addition to that, would it be pertinent to take this policy and incorporate it into our code so that it's not something that we have to go back and look up council meeting notes and such to find out what our policy really is?
We certainly can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Nichols.
I move that we approve Resolution seventeen dash forty-one and instruct staff to bring this back to future date, codified, in a form codified that seems appropriate.
I would second that. A motion by Councilmember Nichols, a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion of the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Raw?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes for in favor.
The next item has been continued till April fifth, two thousand seventeen. And the final item in the business items, in talking with the city manager, since we don't have much of a council here tonight, I believe that we should move this to a future date unless there's someone opposed to doing that.
Mayor, I, we have moved this about six times, it feels like. And I think with the very minimum, we ought to make changes for those council persons who are not in existence anymore, and maybe put someone so that at least they have somebody to refer to. I shouldn't say didn't. They're not on the council anymore. So we can keep those committees functioning until we make a final determination.
Okay. Which ones are they?
They're the ones where it has Councilmember Rice and also Councilmember Higa on there. And I would recommend wherever Councilmember Rice's name is, we just put in Anderson since he kind of is in the same position that she was in. And then we just need to look on Councilmember Higa. Does that review over that? If I look under Sister City, we can just eliminate that one, I believe.
Negative.
Negative?
Cannot remove that one.
Okay, wrong one, that. Councilmember Higa is a alternate on that, and Nichols is primary. So we, we're still covered with Nichols being on that. We have Higa under a youth committee. Is our youth committee active right now? So we could take that one off, and then we've got Higa under Western Growth Coalition, and I would be happy to chair that position until we make other changes.
Is that a motion?
Yes. All right, so move.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Burton and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Discussion of the motion, just quick.
Yes. That quick negative is because the sister city is, I didn't want anybody to think I was just getting really mean with the councilman there. It's the sister city commi- uh, committee meets as needed. And the last time we talked, which was several, several years ago, we talked about creating an additional sister city, which was with Brazil. Um, but that, since then, it's just kind of gone to the wayside, but it is an as-needed basis. And besides that, Ms. Jennifer Handlon, who loves that committee, would be very upset with you.
Thank you for setting up the sister city.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would support this motion if we could have a date that we are continuing this to for final passage. Is there's some, there's further changes that need to be made on this? And I, I just hear that if we make these changes, we're going to say it's good enough and not address the other changes that need to be made. So I would, I would support this motion if we can amend it with a date to, to finish the discussion on. And I don't know what date that is. I'll either make a motion.
I would accept that as a friendly amendment, but I would like to have a date on that.
I'm offering an amendment. I'm just offering a suggestion.
Well, could I make a quick suggestion? If you're wanting to bring it back and make permanent appointments, maybe after the replacement is made? So we have a full council?
Would you be amenable to that?
I would be amenable to that.
So a council meeting possibly in May?
So first meeting in May?
Uh-huh. Does that work?
There's a friendly amendment. Uh, first meeting in May.
You second that?
Yes.
Let's vote.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Raw?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes for in favor.
Okay, um, just before we have a motion to, have you had a chance to look over this letter from the Western Growth? Is anyone opposed to West Jordan helping one of our neighbor city, neighboring cities by learning this? Yes.
The, the only fear I have, it's not that I'm opposed, I actually very much support it, but my only fear is that the long drawn-out process would put a target on us. That's my only fear, but I'm supportive of the letter. I absolutely support what's being done here.
I, I support what's being done here as well. I have serious concerns with the way that this, the homeless issue has been addressed by the legislature, by the county, and, by this, well, by the legislature. And there is very much lacking in this process. The prison relocation process, I, I figure is kind of similar because it's also something nobody wants. Um, however, that process was drawn out, was very transparent. There was a committee, there was site selection, there was public, but there was re-site reselection, and it went on and on and on for months until they got it as close to right as they could. Uh, this with the arbitrary deadlines and the, yeah, the, the issues involved with the, the bills that were passed in the legislature definitely has issues. Um, I would, I would support signing this letter as a council.
All right. Any entertainment motion? Go ahead. Councilmember Nichols.
I move to adjourn the, you don't want that to the letter. You don't need to watch for the letter, right?
No, no, I just need to adjourn.
So I move to adjourn the city council meeting and convene a closed session as for the reasons stated on the packet. And adjourn from there.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Nichols, a second by Councilmember Jacob. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Raw?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Vote passes for in favor.